I'm going to call the city council meeting to order. We have a guest tonight for our Pledge of Allegiance, Merrick Graves. And here he is. Come on forward, come up to the microphone and just take it in, just pull it down. Not too, not too hard. Right. Can you tell us your full name and where you go to school and what grade you're in?
Middle name included.
Yes, please.
Okay. My name is Mark Alexander Graves and I go to Asheville Catholic School.
And your grade?
I'm in sixth grade.
Okay, great, fantastic. All right, so if we'll all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, we're going to let you lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome. All right, we have one proclamation for today, Clean Energy for Us Day, and Katie Bray is here to receive it. And maybe there's others. All right, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation and then if you'll say a few words.
Okay.
Whereas Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change has determined that human activity has caused an unequivocal change in our climate and that limiting climate change will require substantial and sustained reductions of greenhouse gas emissions. And whereas fossil fuel combustion is the primary cause of climate change and the use of fossil fuel also results in other grave costs to our society through air and water pollution, damage to health and well-being of all living beings, mountaintop removal for coal, coal ash leakage, and dependence on foreign fuels and nuclear power. And whereas the City of Asheville has a goal to reduce municipal operations carbon by 80 percent by the year 2030, and the City of Asheville supports a clean energy economy because clean energy technologies such as solar and wind power reduce pollution. And whereas in the fall of 2013, Solarize Asheville, the first program of its kind, resulted in 40 Asheville homes going solar. And whereas Solarize Asheville has evolved into Clean Energy for Us and is working in partnership with the Southern Alliance for Clean Energy, the Western North Carolina Alliance, and Self Help Credit Union, and they will offer free energy audits as well as the opportunity to purchase discounted solar systems and energy efficiency upgrades through March 31st, that are act fast, 2014. Now therefore I, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim March 25th, 2014, as Clean Energy for Us Day in the City of Asheville and commend its observance to all citizens.
Thank you. Well, thank you. The goal of our program is to make it easier and more affordable, should I speak this way?
Yes.
Okay. For folks in our area to invest in energy efficiency and solar energy. We've actually helped over 50 homeowners now in the area go solar. And we have a public workshop tomorrow evening from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the Mill Room for anybody who wants to learn more. Our website is www.cleanenergyfor.us. And I just want to thank the city and the mayor for your support and also the community at large for really embracing this program and recognize that it's a huge team effort and there's a lot of us working on this to make it work, especially Heather Rayburn here, as well as a lot of other volunteers and community nonprofits and partners. So couldn't have done it without everybody and thank you.
All right, next we have the consent agenda and Councilman Kelly needs to be recused from item B and also had some questions about item E. So if we can have a motion to remove Councilman, or to recuse, remove, recuse, Councilman Kelly for item B, I will entertain that motion.
It's removed.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. And then if we could just pull E so that we could discuss that briefly, are there any other items that anyone would like to pull? All right. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda without items B and E, oh and wait.
I'm not really organized here, trying to pull it together.
I'm too fast for you?
A little, just a little. Just a couple of discussion items, Mayor. One around the resolution of intent to close the unnamed alley off South Anne Street. I don't know if someone's got an answer to this, but I was curious as to whether this, the intention is for this site to be developed as a hotel.
I'm informed by the planning director that that is the case.
Thank you. And item E around the Leaf Community Arts lease. Leaf is a fantastic organization, I'm so glad we're moving ahead with this with them. And I'm interested, it's a conversation we've had at various levels over the last couple of years about how best to have our strategic goals align with the nature of what's going on in our community centers. And I thought this would be an opportunity to kind of ask where we are in process with that, so we can kind of get better aligned.
Sure. Debbie Ivester's here from the Park Department, Assistant Director, to speak to that particular lease and I'll try to chime in with the strategic goal part.
Thanks, Debbie.
Councilman Gordon, I think what you're asking about is how other opportunities like this might exist and whether it be a lease agreement or a partnership agreement of any kind of where we have partners come into our facilities and our programmings to either enhance or expand or benefit. And Leaf is an example where they are not only leasing the building, but they are helping us to operate our cultural art program by operating the easel rider mobile art lab when we lost the resources to do that. So that came at a very good time to serve that purpose. But then we have other partnerships such as the Big Brothers Big Sisters help us in some of our programming. So we have partnerships existing. I think they're in various contents and scope of work. We've used a variety of kind of partnerships but either to, and we're working to standardize those. So we find that we have those opportunities and we continue to have people coming to us quite often. So I think it's just really looking into that to see what fits best and how we can incorporate that into our services.
Most specifically talking about, you know, we discussed at the retreat around the achievement gap and how we might utilize programming at those community centers to directly impact that achievement gap. That's something that I'm really interested in.
And I use the Big Brothers Big Sisters because that's one of the things exactly that they do. That's part of the service that they give in return. They bring a variety of services into our centers, especially during the youth programming, and then we give something back in return. So there's that win-win for us both. So that's an example of where it is, their program is clearly addressing youth in that academic arena, but in a community center setting. And we have others and I expect we will have more. We are in the process of building out a comprehensive program plan right now.
Okay.
That over the next one to three years is really going to broaden that base. So I expect over the next few months we'll be able to demonstrate more of that as well.
Thank you so much.
Just a, just a follow-up question. I believe there may be some community interest in knowing the availability of the space there for community meetings as there have been in the past, or what accommodation the department can make for that?
One of the other agenda items, item E regarding the Leaf lease for the East Asheville Center. Leaf has been in the, leasing it for one year so far and part of that arrangement was twofold and it clarifies that in the terms of the lease is that Leaf continued to offer the space as a community resource, very similar to what it was when the city was operating it. And it's just a matter of contacting Leaf, making those arrangements and if it's based on availability. So Leaf does continue to do that and offer that as part of the arrangement that we have in the lease agreement.
Do we want to now include item E on the consent agenda for the full vote?
Of course.
Okay. Okay. All right, so the, I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda without item B.
It's removed. Second.
Although I already voted, had to recuse you. All right, well anyway, we'll do, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then a separate motion to adopt item B.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And I need a second. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we've made it through the consent agenda. We have a presentation, one presentation by our Water Director Steve Shuff tonight. Did you give us these mugs, Steve, that say no water, no coffee?
You stole my thunder.
Oh.
They have neither water nor coffee in them, so they're appropriately labeled.
But there is tap water available.
Very good water.
You don't have to drink coffee through those mugs, you can drink tap water as well.
Very good water, too.
What I wanted to do was to simply draw your attention to a campaign that the American Water Works Association has launched, it's called the Value of Water Campaign. And in terms of the American Water Works Association, the Water Environment Federation, and a number of other organizations that are focused on water and the water environment, all of them have seen that it requires a fairly concerted public relations effort to get people to understand the importance of water, the value of water, and so forth. So the American Water Works Association has begun a campaign where they are creating things that would cause people to think about how they use their water in their everyday lives. The coffee cup was the first thing they came out with, the no water, no coffee. They now have a no water, no beer. They have several other items as well. I have a shirt that says only tap water delivers, which was another part of this campaign. And I just wanted to hit home the importance here. We estimate that we serve about 125,000 people in our service area, that's our service population. And you figure if those people at a minimum use water 10 times a day, which if you think about when you wash your hands, you brush your teeth, you take a shower, flush your toilet, wash dishes and so forth, it doesn't take long to get to 10 times a day. And most people I would guess call on the use of their water more frequently than that. And then you think about the commercial uses, the uses in restaurants, the uses in industry manufacturing and so forth. Then you begin to realize how often people call on water, not only for their public health, not only for their quality of life, but also for the economic well-being of this community. And I think that's the message that the American Water Works is trying to bring out. And they've signed partnerships with a number of different agencies and a number of different nonprofit groups to try and take that message nationwide. And I wanted to give you these mugs kind of to introduce you to the campaign and give you something to think about the next time you have your cup of coffee. So that was it, it was for information.
Great, thank you. I like the mug.
And Scott Burnett asked me to keep it brief, I don't know why, but I hope that was brief enough.
I planted him.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. We are going to go ahead and move up the I-26 item to be our next item. We've got some representatives from the DOT here and we want to make sure we get all you out of here in short order. And before we hear from Councilman Jan Davis on this issue, on this item, he's going to kick us off, I want to recognize Commissioner Joe Belcher is here with us tonight. And that's not, that's not just by coincidence, that's because he's been working hard on the I-26 project and I'll leave it to Jan to explain more about how that process has worked and the work with the county.
Thank you, Mayor. And before we get into that, I have to wholeheartedly agree with, with Steve Shuff. And I think there's probably not a community anywhere that knows the value of water greater than this one does. And I appreciate the mugs and my friend Commissioner Belcher over there knows that water is very important too because it contains fish. Anyhow, this is an important occasion. This is, this is one that we've waited for, for a long time and it's been a rocky road at times, but we have worked very diligently for the last year. A small working group and DOT has, has worked very hard to bring the community together on an alternative route for I-26, for the I-26 connector. And I think it's important that we recognize the members of that committee, the working group was Councilmember Hunt and myself from the city and Commissioner Joe Belcher, Commissioner Holly Jones, Commissioner Brownie Newman from the county, Julie Mayfield from the WNC Alliance, and Lou Bissett who was a member of the public but worked on the early days of the, he and Commissioner Newman really worked very hard the last time that we started selecting alternatives. So this, this committee was put together to, to work on consensus and to find out as much as we could for the community about what, what lies ahead, what opportunities we had. And to set the stage a little bit, the I-26 connector funding had not done well in the way it was, it was considered earlier on. The funding mechanism for it was built on loop funding, which meant that we were competing with loops like around Charlotte and Raleigh as a project. And they always outdistanced just because they could have commercial development along them and there were, there were larger stretches with more congestion. So we did not fare well in that way of prioritization. So about a year ago, that changed, the mobility formula for that changed to being data-driven and it was based on, on a number of different criteria that did not have the loop funding portion to it. So we knew immediately that we had a greater opportunity to come together as a community and that was a very important thing, to come together so that we could let those folks in Raleigh that do the prioritization and with the Federal Highway Administration, that we are on board in this community to having that connector done. And we, early on, when we first started meeting, we were told by the design engineers that the alternatives that we had been talking about and dealing with earlier, the four B that the city had adopted some years back and the alternative three that the county adopted were very different or would be very different as we went forward with this. So we have, we have waited actually till early this, this year to, in fact, just a month ago, to learn what those alternatives really looked like. And DOT has been at the table with us kind of every step of the way to make sure that we understood what was going on, they understood our needs and interests. And they, we, we finally selected the one we feel like will be most successful at going through the prioritization period, that's the funding period. That's the way that we get the project funded and that's the early on of this. It has to be funded to continue moving forward and the working group was selecting one that we feel like has the best chance of going forward. And we want you to know that part of the time that this, that was being done and our, the resolution we'll read in a moment will reflect all these, these portions, but we worked very hard with the DOT and FHWA folks to make sure that the community benefits in a number of ways that earlier on we'd not been able to do. The connectivity portions, and I'll let Councilmember Hunt speak to those, he's worked personally very, very hard to make sure that that happened. And we've opened the process to a lot of the bike ped groups around town and we've had public meetings and just gone through a lot of process. And I want to recognize at this time, and we'll hear more from them in a moment, we have with us this evening our DOT Representative David Brown, David if you would stand please, and Chief Engineer Jay Swain, Engineer Ricky Tipton, and our bike ped specialist Christina Solberg. I'm not sure that's the right title, but she's a pro on those things. And these folks have, they've been very dedicated. They have met with us a number of times and a lot of times, our meetings usually happen early in the morning and they would be there and they've had their associates in Raleigh come and we have had just a great opportunity to talk to people and see exactly what opportunities lie out there. Now, I will tell you, going in, this is, in our opinion, there's not a perfect alternative. But this one comes closest to funding, comes closest to getting the job done, and we've already gained, the county has signed on to this one last week and that's our purpose tonight, to hear from the public and to here bring counsel up. And counsel's been brought to date, but it's, this is the great opportunity for us here to move forward with something that will make a tremendous change in the, the safety and the lives and economy of Western North Carolina. So Mark, if you would like to say a few words about the bike ped portions and then read the resolution and then we'll have the DOT folks come up and put the maps up and go over timelines.
Sure. I, I'll read the resolution here in just a second, but in regard to the neighborhood connectivity and bicycle pedestrian connectivity, some of you might recall that late last year, I think it was our first meeting, our only meeting in December, we adopted amendments to the city's Greenways Master Plan. And we said at the time it was largely to make sure that certain elements of connectivity would be acknowledged and recognized by state DOT as this project might move forward. And so there are, and we sent a letter to DOT outlining what those, those elements are. There are several components, but key pieces include making sure that the Amboy Road area in West Asheville includes complete streets treatment, I guess you would say, sidewalks, bike lanes, et cetera. That the Haywood Road Bridge replacement over I-26 in West Asheville would be, have generous enough sidewalks and bicycle infrastructure so that those uses along Haywood Road would be supported. And as well, maybe the largest element of all those we recommended would be a connection from Haywood Road in West Asheville down along the current interstate corridor across the Bowen Bridges and up into downtown Asheville that might include, for instance, a cantilever deck off of the, the south side of the Bowen Bridges that would carry bike and pedestrian elements there. So there has been a lot of effort gone into, that's gone into discussing with DOT and thinking about the way these elements might be included, or the response from DOT has been positive. I know the community is interested in seeing those elements included. I know that there are members of council that are sort of counting on it as well. Let me just say a little more about timeline and process from here as I understand it, and I think the DOT folks will speak to this as well. But the resolution that we are considering tonight addresses the need to identify a funding amount for this competitive scoring formula that, that Councilman Davis mentioned. There is a more thorough consideration of alternatives that will come about a year from now through, through the environmental impact statement process. It's part of federal law and there'll be another important decision point there for this council and the community, once those alternatives are laid out thoroughly on the table. So this, it's, it's very much a work in progress. The resolution we're considering tonight is not the final act by any means, it'll be a more thorough batch of information and a more thorough consideration a year from now. But having said that, let me read the resolution that we'll be considering tonight. And it actually took a few hours of negotiation, debate, et cetera, within our working group to get to the very detailed wording here. And it's a, and the wording is important and it was carefully considered. Whereas traffic congestion and safety are increasing problems along I-240 and I-26 through Asheville, a critical route for regional commerce and tourism. And whereas local and regional residents, visitors, interstate travelers, and commercial freight haulers rely on this route in ever-increasing numbers. And whereas improvements to the I-240 and I-26 corridor should be minimally disruptive to the local community and should enhance the quality of life for residents and visitors wherever possible. And whereas North Carolina Department of Transportation in its planning of TIP Project I-2513 has indicated preliminary commitment to alternatives that compared to earlier proposals, reduce relocation of homes and businesses, reduce sound impact through better deployment of sound walls, and provide critically needed bicycle, pedestrian, and neighborhood connectivity infrastructure consistent with local government master plans. And whereas the NC DOT and the Federal Highway Administration have expressed openness to consider design alternatives that reduce scale and cost of the project, including the number of lanes required, should upcoming traffic demand studies warrant and justify reductions. And whereas in the event that the selected design alternative does not include modifications to the I-240 infrastructure on the east side of the French Broad River to support urban redevelopment, improve neighborhood connectivity, and improvement to local traffic patterns, local governments will evaluate a separate future project through the French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization, we know that as the MPO, to address those concerns. And whereas various detailed alternatives for design and implementation of the project are to be fully evaluated and provided to decision-makers for formal consideration as required under the National Environmental Policy Act and the environmental impact statement in the coming months, and local leaders working through the MPO can only then provide their final endorsement of any alternative. And whereas the City of Asheville in its five-year capital improvement plan has designated $1 million in co-funding for the project to support the critically needed community connectivity features. And whereas members of the community have expressed their strong preference that the project soon be funded and constructed in a way that solves current congestion and safety problems while mitigating negative project impacts and addressing community needs. And whereas NC DOT is conducting preliminary cost-benefit evaluations of similar projects statewide under the strategic prioritization process to establish specifically which projects will be eligible for near-term funding of design and construction under the recently adopted Strategic Mobility Formula, and I'm almost done. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe and the City Council of the City of Asheville as follows, that the Asheville City Council, along with the Buncombe County Commission and the French Broad River MPO hereby recommend that for the purpose of the upcoming scoring and ranking process, NC DOT use the estimated costs of $230 million associated with the preliminary three-seal alignment alternative for the V section of the project. And in preparation of the draft environmental impact statement for the project, NC DOT clearly include elements that will address community needs for sound barriers and bicycle, pedestrian, and neighborhood connections, including location, design, and funding methodology of associated infrastructure elements. And that this resolution become effective upon its adoption is dated today and there are signature lines there. So that's the resolution. Mayor, I think that it was your preference that maybe we would have the DOT presentation now and maybe take public comment and then there might be a motion and a second and a vote. Does that sound like the flow?
Yes.
Okay.
And so at this point, Rick Tipton's going to come forward and put these things up for us. As he's coming up, I just want to take a moment to first apologize for calling Vice Mayor Hunt Councilman several times. But then also to, I think all the working committee would, would also say that Mark has really done a lot of the heavy lifting on the riding of the ordinance and pushed us to get together more frequently, to work harder and should somewhat be recognized for that. I think he worked incredibly hard and I appreciate it.
Is this my cup of coffee?
That's your cup of coffee.
Okay, thank you.
That cup has coffee in it.
Right. Made with Asheville water?
Made with Asheville water.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Manheimer, council, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you this evening. My name is Rick Tipton, I'm a Division Construction Engineer for Division 13 for the Department of Transportation and here to just talk briefly about some of the things with the I-26, I-2513, I-26 connector project and possibly answer some questions that you may have. So I'm going to try to keep this brief and be mindful of time. So I think one of a couple of the main points that was, Councilman Davis asked was for the timelines and I'll probably look at one of the maps and, and then talk about the relocations. So I'll just move on through that. And of course I went too far. And of course, I went too far.
Previous is that there?
Previous. Right here, talk about the schedule. Open house meeting. We actually are planning to have our next public meeting will be the time for all the public to come out. We right now believe we have that actually scheduled. We're trying to firm up May the 6th, which will, it'll be at the Renaissance, so we're on schedule for that. That'll be an informal meeting for people to come by and come in, look at the maps, meet. We'll have a number of our team members up from Raleigh, as well as folks from here locally, come in, speak with us, look at, you know, individuals, want to see how they're impacted. In any of the alternatives, they'll be able to do that and we'll be able to talk with those folks and take comments there. The next step would be the draft environmental impact statement. That's due out next winter, probably around February or so. With a formal public hearing in the spring of 2015, we'll follow that up. And then we'll be able to produce the, hope, the plan is the final environmental impact statement. And that's when we'll have an alternate selected and everything, and it'll be finalized with so, and then the record of decision, that's a federal term as to everything's kind of finalized there. And that's looking at the summer of 2016. The dates here are for just the A section, and those have been the dates that we've had in the past, and don't really pay too much attention to those. We need to see what the formula spells out for funding for all three sections of the project. And I'm just going to move forward to this map here that really it's a side-by-side comparison, speaking mainly of the differences now is alternate three and then the refinement, which we've called 3C. And the main differences that we see is you can see where, up in this area where the French Broad River crossing is in this area here, and by doing this, we've tried to reduce the footprint and pull it further south, closer to the Bowen Bridges, and you can see where it crosses here. What that does is it makes a difference in the residential relocations, mainly in the area of Emma, specifically Boone Street and the Mobile Home Park here. The original three actually got up into that. It was actually been revised a little bit also, but it does make quite a bit of difference in the residential relocation. There has been some question, you know, the business relocations are about the same. You know, we were counting some businesses here and would probably get some businesses in the area up here of Pearson Bridge, where that intersection is. And here, of course, we're going to probably have some impacts there that we didn't have before. So it's kind of a trade-off of who would be impacted between these two alternates. Everything in the area south, you know, in this area back in here is pretty much the same. And then as Councilman, or Vice Mayor Hunt was speaking earlier, we're looking at that cantilever deck here on the bridge, on the south side of the Bowen Bridge. So that just kind of gives you an idea of the differences that we're looking at between three and 3C. Everything else, alternates are still pretty much the same four and 4B going forward. And then I'm just going to move forward, talk a little bit about the relocations that we're seeing. Here, 46 to 19 in the residential relocation, so you can see a significant drop in what we're saying. The reason for the parentheses there, the 54, is the orig, that was the number that comes out of the first draft environmental impact statement. And when we do an actual count, we'll go and count, there'll be some multifamily houses. The numbers we have that are not in parentheses are just rooftop counts. So sometimes you may have more than one residence inside, under a roof. So we're just trying to compare apples to apples there. And then I think the last thing I've got, here are the cost that we were talking about for the four alternates, four we're looking at. Of course, this one is at 230 million. And then they range from there up to 332. In the past, we've used an average cost of three, four, and 4B, and that, and for the benefit cost, but the idea here will be able to use this 200, which has been around 295 million. But the idea here would be to use the 230 million for the cost for the benefit cost calculation. And that's really what I've got, and if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Thank you.
Yeah, one question that you answered when we met with you before, but I'd like to have it in public, is that this is not expected to reduce the congestion westbound on the Bowen Bridge at rush hour, right?
Well, I would say that it will reduce the congestion because of some of the 26 traffic that would normally be coming in. And I would, just to be clear, if I wasn't clear before, but every day, I actually commute north every day, so when you're going north, there's actually quite a bit of traffic that's coming from the north on 1923, future 26, that's making the one-lane ramp onto the Bowen Bridges. But that traffic will no longer be there even with this alternative. So I think it will have an impact for the traffic and reduce that congestion there at the rush hour time. I really do.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Oh, some after comment.
Okay. Okay. Do you have anything further? We're going to go into the public comment and?
No, I'm fine. I'll just, I'll still be here if anything comes.
And there may be questions. I think what we'll do for the public comment, if there are questions of the DOT, if you've got a notepad or something, just jot them down and we'll try to do them all at the end and not have you come up each time.
That'll be fine, thank you.
If they come up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, may I add one more thing that we may not have pointed out well enough. I think it's significant to know that DOT has been interested in helping us with those greenway connectivity pieces that Vice Mayor spoke of. And we as a city have set aside in capital improvement funds, money to make those greenways and the connectivity pieces come together. So, we're kind of in an unusual situation. We're one of the few communities that's stepping forward with actual dollars in our budget to help DOT with these things. And DOT has also made the, they have moved forward in saying that if we altered our greenway plan to reflect what's happening here, that they would make right-of-way acquisition to accommodate that as they move forward. So that's pretty significant. In fact, it's, 10 years ago when we were having this discussion, we had an aesthetics committee and they got to choose what color oak leaves were on the walls, if the sound wall, if we could actually afford to do sound walls that were ornate. We are a long way from what we were 10 years ago. We're actually talking about getting some real things in this community that we've been wanting, so that's a good plus.
Jan mentioned that Commissioner Belcher was a part of the working group and named off others, including Julie Mayfield, who I think I saw walk in. Can you hold your hand up, Julie? Just want to make sure you're acknowledged. I don't think Jan saw you walk in when you walked in.
I did acknowledge you, I just didn't see her.
There we go. Yeah.
Okay, I think we're to the point where we're ready to take public comment on the proposed resolution. Yes, sir. If you'll, so for public comment, please state your name and you have three minutes to speak. And our timekeeper is over there, our trustee clerk. And if you are speaking for a group, if you've got three people to yield their time, you can have 10 minutes.
Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to speak to you today. My name's Tom Laisley. I own a business here in Asheville, and I want to encourage you to help move this project forward. Your support, the county commissioners are critical, and I can give you a perfect example of why I came to speak to you. I come from Houston, Texas. And just before we left, they decided to widen Interstate 10, which runs dead east-west, dead through the center of town, to 14 lanes. Well, here's what happened. All of the political parties got behind it. They whisked through a few lawsuits, got rid of the naysayers. It was finished, it was 100,000 cars a day going in and out of the city. Now, we don't have that here in Asheville, but they finished that thing two years ahead of schedule and $2 billion under budget. So, that's my encouragement to you to make this happen best you can. Thank you.
Yes.
My name is Mike Buttram. I represent the Asheville Board of Realtors. And for your information, the Asheville Board has recently merged with the Brevard Board of Realtors, bringing our membership now over 1,400. I'm not here to speak against anyone's proposals tonight, but I am speaking for the council to adopt this joint resolution. The process, and I think very few people probably spend more time in an automobile than a Realtor applying their trade, selling real estate in and around Asheville. Any project that's going to offer more safety, not only for our members, but certainly for all the motorists in and around our area is, I think, a very good thing. Moreover, with a known plan, an agreed-upon plan, we then know what real estate is going to be affected and what is not going to be affected. When there's something affected and Realtors don't know about it, it's a material fact that they're held responsible for knowing, even though it might be obviously in the public domain. It's a higher calling that Realtors have to have. The known commodity is opportunities for development. So I think that, and certainly I would urge all, all the commissioner, or the council members to make sure there's due process in terms of the environment and the issues taking place, but I think this is a good project for Asheville and we're proud to support it. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Council members, Madam Mayor, my name is Rich Lee. I live in West Asheville. I'm presenting a statement by the I-26 Connect Us Project. The I-26 Connect Us Project is made up of representatives from the Asheville neighborhoods that stand to be most impacted by the I-26 Connector, including West Asheville, Burton Street, and Montford. The group is convened by the Western North Carolina Alliance. We have been working together since 2009. All participants agree that the unfinished portion of I-26, as it passes through Buncombe County, should be completed in a timely way. But the I-26 Connect Us Project members are unable to support the North Carolina Department of Transportation's request for the city of Asheville and Buncombe County to endorse an alternative for Section B of the I-26 Connector at this time. We recognize that the new state-level funding prioritization process is underway and the project may rank higher in the process if the least expensive alternative is analyzed. However, we believe it is premature to ask the city and county to endorse an alternative prior to the completion of the environmental impact statement, the EIS, and a full understanding of the relative impacts and benefits of each alternative. Endorsing the least expensive alternative at this point, even for the limited purpose of prioritization, creates a very real risk that our community will be locked into that alternative in the future, even if the EIS reveals that another alternative is more beneficial. If however, adoption of the resolution in support of the least expensive alternative, Alternative 3C, is the best way to ensure that the project remains viable, we ask that the city and county be mindful of the following issues. Number one, that Alternative 3C as currently designed does not meet the city's long-range plans. Number two, that the resolution is for the limited purposes of prioritization only and does not reflect an endorsement of a final alternative, which will only be made after completion of the EIS and public hearings. Number three, that the EIS should include infrastructure for bicycles and pedestrians in all alternatives consistent with the city of Asheville's master plans. Number four, that the city and county work with DOT to create benefits for those communities that stand to be impacted the most by this project. Number five, that if a final preferred alternative is selected that does not remove highway traffic from the Jeff Bowen Bridges, that the city and county will advocate for a new project that will allow Patton Avenue and the bridges to become a continuous boulevard from West Asheville into downtown. And number six, that the city and county continue seeking to work with DOT and the Federal Highway Administration to identify options to reduce the footprint of the project, including utilizing design exceptions and context-sensitive design and conducting a new traffic study. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Alan McGwin and I'm here representing the Asheville Design Center. And I think you all know the Asheville Design Center has worked many years on the I-26 project, actually worked helping with 4B when the city endorsed that the first time. And I have a written statement, but I'm going to summarize that and then I would like to leave that behind if that's okay. What we're most concerned about is that the state formula for prioritizing this process favors the least expensive alternative over important design requirements. And that those, the failure to meet those design requirements can impact our community for years to come. There are many cities across this country that are tearing down roads that were built with good intentions but didn't meet the needs and created more problems than they solved. There was a local representative, I think, stated it very well just recently, saying this process is a perfect storm of processes and steps happening backwards. And this is, in our view, design is something where the design solves the problem first, then you address the cost issues. In this case, we're making decisions based on cost and then we're just going to live with the results of the design. I think we all know that 3C is not apples to apples with the other alternatives. It does not have the movements that take the traffic of 240 and put them on the interstate. It crosses the Bowen Bridge and then all of that intersection has to occur by splitting Patton Avenue apart into an interstate intersection, basically like what we have already on the east side of the river. So, we think fulfilling the program is the primary tenet of good design. And then we should address the budget constraints. Bottom line, the ADC recommends that a full understanding of the impacts and benefits of each alternative be carefully considered before making a formal recommendation. We're afraid that if this recommendation is made, that it sets this process forward without, you know, giving further consideration to the other alternatives. And that's what we want to make sure, that there is careful consideration of the best designs, the best solutions that meet the master plan and the requirements of the city. So I could, I'd leave this with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? I think I saw a hand in the back. Yes. Go ahead. Maggie, I think that Buzzard's about to go.
Madam Mayor, City Council Members, my name is Tom Muncie. I live in North Asheville. I moved here in 1969. Asheville was a quiet little backwater town at that time, but not so anymore. And I'm here to encourage you to please adopt 3C. We need this as quickly as we can. I'm just astounded that 118,000 cars, vehicles go across that bridge every day, and that's what the paper is saying. So please, if you can, help resolve this road jam. But also, I'm a small business owner, have been for quite a few years. There are a lot of people moving here and bringing their businesses with them, or they're coming here and starting a business. Our economic development will grow if you get a better system of traffic. And it's my understanding that with the Port Authority system coming into the Greenville-Spartanburg area, that's going to throw a lot more tractor-trailers coming up I-26. We need that bridge, across the bridge. Please vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. I'm over here, yeah.
My name's Buzzard Kennedy. I've lived here in Asheville all my life. I personally would like to thank each and every one of you that's worked on this thing and put long hours into trying to come up with a solution to move this project forward and find a solution. As you know, the resolution must be improved, must be approved in order to make the priority list. It's a new day in Asheville and Buncombe County is back in the running for a major road improvement that will enable economic development to occur well beyond the lives of everyone sitting in this room. I ask that you please pass this resolution. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Councilman, my name is Matthew Burl. I'm also a small business owner here in Asheville, but was raised here and can remember when the open cut was a big problem that we talked about back in the early 70s. It has a similar feel to what we're dealing with here. And it's interesting that there are lots of other, as we've already heard, you know, opinions as well as styles of this particular piece of engineering. But at this point in time, it is really time for us to finally act. Now that we do have the priority system in the state, it is time for us to get this project moving. Again, being here since the early 60s, I have seen lots of these types of problems come through Asheville. And it is now time for the Midwest and the Atlantic coastal ports to be connected with a good, solid connection through Asheville. This has been a problem for us, obviously, as you guys well know. We appreciate all the work that you've done to get us to this point. But the, even with companies like Meritor sitting out on I-26, they're making a large truck. like Meritor sitting out on I-26, they're making large truck axles that end up going to places like Brazil and South America. They need to go to a coastal port, which is not just Charleston, but also Savannah and Jacksonville to get there, and they need to have access to places like Detroit and Akron, Ohio, and Cincinnati and Indiana. And so it's very valuable for us to be able to participate in trying to get this completed for the East Coast economy. Tourism, obviously, is a big issue for us and we can only benefit from both ends of I-26 as the central part of this piece of transportation infrastructure. So I ask you also to please consider it. I'm on the Economic Development Coalition here in Buncombe County and am delighted that you guys have brought it up to this point and I appreciate you if you would go ahead and vote in favor. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the, well, it's not officially a public hearing, but I'll close the public comment. You mentioned maybe there might be some more questions? Go ahead.
Rick, can I pull you back up here? I appreciate all the work y'all have done. I understand that this schedule put things on a different track than had been intended and you've done a great job of kind of helping us to understand the order in which things needed to happen. You were talking about a public meeting in May. I was wondering, how will these drawings of possible alternatives, how will they be shared with the public so folks could have a look at it?
We will actually, at that time, have printed maps that we will, very large printed maps, and we'll have numerous copies of them and we will have them, you know, at that particular meeting, have those posted up and a number of people will be there to be able to look at all those. And they will be at a level that will show how people will be impacted. And I know sometimes those maps are difficult for folks to read, but I'm, you know, so that's why we're there, to try to help them, guide them through that process. Also, the current maps are on our website, on the project website, and they're available for anyone to look at today if they like and they're in a PDF format. And they will continue to be there and as they're updated, we will update that website with them.
Thank you. That's really helpful to know that they're already online and people can have a look and then if they want to see the big maps, which are pretty strikingly big, they can come out in May and do that. I wanted to ask you about one specific piece of it regarding access to Westwood in West Asheville. I know that I pointed this out during a small meeting that we had and you explained that this is just part of a draft and it would be something that y'all would be taking a closer look at. I just wanted to kind of put that out there and hear your reflection.
Okay. Westwood, I think in your talking, and I'd like to maybe back up to the map here for just a second. This is not, let me grab that pointer. Thank you. This is kind of the scale, I'd like to be a little more zoomed in, but we'll have to make do. And I believe you're talking about Westwood in this area right here, is that correct?
Got it.
And one of the things here in the alternates have looked is, this part here is the continuation of what would be Patton Avenue in this alternative, or probably a little easier actually to see down here. So if you were on Patton Avenue coming from, say, Lester Highway or somewhere and you wanted to continue on, you would actually follow this route here to kind of bypass interchange. And by doing that, and that being a surface street, more of a local street, allows to provide a connection there to Westwood Place. And that's something, I think, in, although, we've always been looking at providing some more connection in that area going forward. I think that's been looked at for a number of years.
I'm hopeful that as this process goes forward, and I understand that today we're not deciding on any final drawings or anything, that folks at Westwood in that area will contribute to the process as far as what would be most helpful for that neighborhood.
Absolutely. And I mean, if they have comments, you know, and if they come out at the meeting in May if something needs to be different about that or how that connection's made, that's the perfect time to let us know how they view that.
Great. There's a couple of things that I want to say and then I wanted to come back to the folks who will go through the relocation. So just kind of a heads up and I'm going to ask you a couple of questions about the process around that in just a minute.
Okay.
Thank you, Rick.
Give me to take a seat and then come back. That's fine.
That'd be great. So Mayor, members of City Council, I wanted to, first of all, express my gratitude for the work of this working group and DOT's patience with our process here. Jan, what year would you say this whole process started?
I think it goes back to 1992 if I'm not mistaken.
Ninety-two, so we're 22 years in. And we've been through all kinds of fits and starts and so the willingness of the commissioners and City Council members and everyone to come to the table to say, "Okay, we've been trying this for 22 years, let's come back to the table and see what we can put together this time," I think it shows a lot of commitment to the community and to a spirit of compromise. And I'm just really grateful for that work. We do need to get in line for this funding or we won't even have a chance. And so that's part of our timetable here. I'm especially grateful, Mark, for your work in, you've got such a good grasp around some of these transportation challenges and I know that this is one of the reasons, one of the big reasons that you wanted to serve on council was to really kind of see these transportation networks grow and connect and create that neighborhood connectivity. And so you having your head in, in the middle of all this is really helpful. It gives me a lot of confidence that we're going to get to that better place in regards to it. The thing, one could go on and on and perhaps some will and maybe it'll be me. But one of the things that I wanted to bring up tonight, I think that we have a responsibility and an opportunity to acknowledge what is a darker chapter in our history and that is the policies of urban renewal in the City of Asheville that from the 50s through the 70s broke neighborhoods apart and broke families apart and devalued entire swaths of our population. And we continue to see the effects of urban renewal today. I was looking over the Twilight of a Neighborhood piece, the article by Ms. Judson from the History Department of UNCA and saw a couple of quotes I wanted to share. One is from Johnny Grant who says that "The separation inflicted by urban renewal still haunts many people." And I thought that was kind of a good way to put it, that Asheville is haunted by these policies and we have an opportunity through this process to recognize that past and to say, "This was something that happened and we need to go ahead and put that out there on the table and not pretend it didn't. And when we go to expand this road, we will be expanding on the footprint of urban renewal." I just want to put that out there and say it. Here's another quote from a fellow named Daryl Wasson who was a resident over Hill Street. He said, "My mother and I watched them build the highway. In 1957, the highway department came and took out all the houses except for three on our cross street. They came through again in '65 and they cleaned the place out completely in '67." That was the Hill Street neighborhood. Every one of the I-26 alternatives that we've seen at this table and at every table cuts into Burton Street neighborhood, all of them do. And this has been part of the conversation ongoing. And I'm gratified to see that the alternative that's before us today has the smallest incursion into that neighborhood, but we need to recognize that it's still there. And I've had the opportunity to talk with some residents of Burton Street neighborhood and, I mean, they know better than anybody else what's coming and they've had that guillotine above their necks for 22 years as we've discussed what's going to happen. So what we have is an opportunity to acknowledge a past that we regret and this time we get to do things differently. So when we're looking at these alternatives going forward, that we can look at that neighborhood connectivity and a Smith Mill Creek Greenway and other transportation infrastructure that adds greater connectivity to this neighborhood rather than further isolating, that we can go the extra mile with those residents who are affected by a forced relocation. And it's my understanding, and this is something, this is kind of where my question's going to go, Rick and Gary, I'm going to have a couple of questions around process. There's been some folks who have mentioned that they might be more open to the relocation, they could just stay in the neighborhood. They could make sure, not only are they getting fair market value for their home that they're losing to this highway, but that they can stay where they are, which I think is a really reasonable request, especially given our history. And it's my sense that we have a responsibility to do that. So one of the things I'm hoping that we can do throughout this process is to make that commitment to the Burton Street neighborhood. It's one that I've made and will continue to make and I'm confident that we can have a process going forward that will acknowledge a past that we do not want to repeat and will accommodate that neighborhood with the respect that it deserves. So with that, Rick, I was wondering if you could kind of talk for a minute about the process of relocation and how that goes and how folks are kind of compensated and just kind of give us a rough idea what that looks like.
I'll be happy to speak to that. I'm not a right-of-way agent or, but I do have a working knowledge of right-of-way acquisition for the department. Typically, in a project such as this, or really any project, there's always times that we'll need to buy, purchase right-of-way to be able to move forward with a project. Sometimes that's just bare land, sometimes that will actually require us to buy a structure and have someone relocated, move to, they'll need to move somewhere else. But what will typically happen is in a project such as this, our right-of-way agents or firms that we hire, we don't necessarily always, we'll use quite a bit of consultant work to come out and do this type of work also. They'll come out, meet with the property owners, let them know what the impacts are going to be, and then we will actually do an appraisal and get a fair market value of the take. So to make it simple, if it was someone's home, we would do an appraisal, very similar. Actually, it's a much more complex appraisal than is done if you just did an appraisal for, say, a loan or something like that. And then we'll make an offer based upon that appraisal. And one of the things we don't do is, you don't, you know, if I went to buy a house from someone, I would try to go as low as I could go. We don't, we start at fair market value and that's where we have to start by law.
We don't lowball people.
We don't lowball people. And so we start at fair market value and then we go forth from there and they try to negotiate and go through some things that need to be to try to reach a negotiated agreement instead of going through a lawsuit or condemnation process. And what I understand is that we typically, we settle in the high 90% range, in the high 90s of all of our right-of-way takes through negotiation. So I think it's a very fair process in general. Some people may not think so and, you know, personally, I've not gone through it from that side.
Sure.
But, you know, I think that speaks a lot to say that we settle the majority of those. You know, if somebody's specifically being relocated, it's, one of the things we do is we try to talk with those folks first. So a right-of-way acquisition process for a project this large is usually a couple of years. And we try to talk upfront with those folks, knowing that that takes time to get people in the situation where they need to move. And by doing that, then one of the things that happens, just to kind of briefly go through it, is our relocation, our right-of-way agents actually go out and they look for comparable housing to where they are today. So if they're in a three-bedroom, you know, or something like that, they go out and find them and try to find comparable houses as close to the areas they can and will actually, that's how we base part of our relocation, there's separate relocation payments and we base that relocation on that. So sometimes you may be in a home, but you don't necessarily, there's not housing, comparable housing, to replace that home that's within that same price range. So there's assistance beyond the price of the house that we're purchasing to help them bridge that gap, so to speak.
If we, going forward, wanted to be able to commit to folks around making sure that, you know, we did right by them, it sounds like y'all are going to be able to come through with fair market or better, y'all are going to come through with some of the costs of relocation. And so it sounds like we're going to have a lot of room to figure that out and it's something that I hope we can all commit to. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. And I appreciate everyone's indulgence. I know that was a lot to say, but needed to say.
Rick, if you'll turn around and come back. I want to ask a couple of questions and, you know, I've worked a lot on this with you guys, so I think I know the answer, but just to help the public understand a little bit better. We talked about the maps that you guys will present in May, early May, May 5th, I think you said.
The 6th, I believe, is it?
Those will be a little more developed than what we're seeing here. They'll have, they'll be a little further down the road in terms of detail. Is that a fair statement?
That's very fair. That is absolutely correct. They'll be very color-coded and a lot more detailed to where you, people can really be able to, and they'll be at a scale, you know, you can look in and pick out individual parcels and the properties will be shown, the parcel lines and things like that.
And then next spring, actually, just a point of clarification, I think your slide earlier said winter 2015 would be the draft EIS. I think you showed us a piece of paper about a month ago that said spring of 2015 and...
Yeah, and I think, I think it may have said, but we're shooting for February, I think. And I'm trying to be, you know...
I understand. I just, I want to make sure people aren't upset with you in January.
Right, yeah, yeah. So I'm still saying, February's still, by looking at it out there today, it might still be winter right now.
Just because I saw it. Now, so between the maps we see in May and the ones we see in the draft EIS, which is a little less than a year from now, maybe.
Right.
There'll be even more definition there and our request is that these neighborhood connectivity and bike path elements show up by then and that we really get a feel for exactly what we're dealing with there. So it remains a work in progress till the draft EIS. And now relating to funding amount that, this dollar amount we mentioned in our resolution, that in no way fixes the spending on the project. That is for the purpose of ranking projects statewide. The draft EIS will nearly certainly have a revised number that is more fine-tuned to what each of the different alternatives would cost. And so the numbers will change, right? And we're not, we're not in any way locking ourselves or the community into some threshold dollar amount. Is that...
I think that's a very fair statement. You know, that's where we are today and that's our, it's an estimate and it's based upon, you know, the knowledge that we have of what that needs to be today. Estimates will change based upon inflation, construction costs, revisions to the project, things like that, that you have to have somewhere to start and it's really an estimate. I've watched, you know, the estimates on this project move and go back and forth over the years and I think that's to be expected, that it will change some, it will have to. There's no, it's not like we're saying, "This is the ceiling, we're going to spend this much and no more." I don't anticipate that.
Right. And even though another, there may be, by the time y'all do the draft EIS, the alternatives might look a little different or they might look significantly different and there'll be different dollar amounts attached. And this dollar amount today doesn't mean that a different alternative that might make more sense at a different dollar amount is not.
Yeah, I think, I mean...
I just wanted to make sure, I've heard from the community that, a lot of concern, including a couple of comments tonight, that this action tonight somehow caps us at some dollar amount that is inflexible no matter what the alternatives are in the future.
I think we still have to, you know, like you say, we have to go through the process and go through the NEPA process to choose an alternative. That still has to be done. And, you know, but we have to have a place to start. I mean, in the past, we had used 290 million as a cap, as a cost for an alternative for that prioritization, but you could have, you know, you could have said, "Well, we're going to use the most expensive." That could be worst-case scenario, but here, I think it's really good that we can use the least expensive in this case and put the project in the best possibility to go forward in the prioritization.
Thank you.
Thanks.
This isn't a question, I have a couple of comments. So you can... I'll try to be coherent. I had careful notes on this thumb drive and discovered when I got here that these new laptops don't have Word on them, so I can't read my notes, which brings me to an interesting point, I think. First of all, I'd like to thank the committee, you've done great work. I think it's been a slog, I understand. You were dealt a pretty bad hand and you've had to work hard and I appreciate local DOT people. I know you've all worked in good faith to try to move this thing forward. But here's my question. If I offer you a laptop computer, a used laptop, for $330 that works great and does everything you need to do... everything you need to do, or this other computer that only costs $230, but it won't do what you need to do, the $100 you save isn't much of a savings, because you've got a piece of junk in your hands. So we're being told, I think, to opt for a $100 million less project, a $230 million project, instead of a $330 million project. And I'm speaking here to what the ADC, the Asheville Design Center, has pointed out. This plan is a highway through Asheville. It's a highway to connect, as one of the commenters said, to connect the Midwest to the new inland port in Greer. It's going to host 25,000 more truck trips a year through Asheville. But it doesn't really address the issues that we've been seeking to address in Asheville since 1992. As Councilman Smith pointed out, there are, there are social justice issues here. One of the great things about the ADC Design 4B was that it carved the I-240 traffic around Hillcrest. And when one day Hillcrest is no longer a federal housing project, it could become part of the city again. It's one of the prime pieces of real estate in Asheville. It also prevents us from making Patent Avenue into the boulevard that the ADC envisioned, where we'd have more business development along that boulevard. Instead, we're going to create, on the other side of the river, the same thing we have in downtown Asheville, which is the mishmash of Patent Avenue and I-240. I really think that this does, at this rather great expense, it doesn't do a whole lot for Asheville. We aren't getting much. One of the changes here that was made was we're no longer being considered under the idea of a beltway. We're now being considered of a throughway. And that's part of the current administration in Raleigh's idea, is to expedite commercial traffic through the state. This is the Koch Brothers' plan. This is not the Asheville Design Center plan. And although I'm resigned to the fact that this is what's probably going to go forward, I'm not going to be able to support it. I really, I don't think this is the right thing for Asheville, and 20 years from now, I believe I will be seen to have been right, although it'll be too late. Thank you.
Any further? Anyone else?
Motion.
Yes.
Mayor, I move we adopt the resolution as read.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? And I would just add, I haven't spoken on the issue, and I, I, just to let the public know that Commissioner David Gant and I did have an opportunity to have a phone conference with Secretary of Transportation Teta, the North Carolina Secretary of Transportation, to highlight for him the, the vote that was coming up and the importance of this project to, to our community, but to also emphasize to him that, you know, one of the important components for Asheville that's included in this project is the bike-ped component, and that, that our resolution would include language about that. And I've had an opportunity to speak with Secretary Teta on a couple of occasions and have been pleasantly surprised to hear him talk very enthusiastically about multimodal transportation, meaning incorporating bike-ped components into transportation projects. And he spoke very favorably about that element of any design that, that results from, you know, the process to come. So that, that helps me get to a place where, where I can support this project and, including the various other issues that are included in this, this resolution. But I, I am encouraged by the support for a more modern view of, of transportation and how it may be a realization for us and our community. So, just adding that there. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And I'll just give you a moment if you, unless you want to stay for the, the last couple of items on our agenda. Thank you all very much for...
Thank you so much, Rick.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Back to our agenda, the, under unfinished business, we have Item A, Recommendation for Request for Qualifications for the City-Owned Property at 6876 Haywood Street. Sam Powers is fighting his way to the front here to speak to City Council on this issue. Just give it a moment.
Would you like me to wait a moment?
Maybe just for a second.
Well, I have to keep...
Okay, chatting in the hall, chatting in the hall.
I don't know why, I'm so, so close. Just, I just minimize it, just minimize it, and then hit Agenda again.
I think we're, I think we're ready. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and members of City Council. I'm Sam Powers, Economic Development Director. This is a consideration and review of city-owned property that's located at 68 to 78 Street, excuse me, Haywood Street, and consideration of the recommendation by the city's Planning and Economic Development Committee for economic development uses of the property. The property's approximately three-quarters of an acre, and it's located in the northern part of the city's central business district. The property was acquired in the early 2000s for use as a city parking deck. However, the parking structure ultimately was not constructed on the site. In 2006, City Council recommended pursuing a process to place the property back in the private sector in uses that would generate capital investment, create property tax revenues, and help the city meet strategic goals. Council undertook a significant public process and ultimately selected McKibben Hotel Group for the development of the site. And I want to take just a second to talk a little about the significant public process that we undertook as the, as time has gone by. I looked back at some of the records of, of the events that, that took place over the period of time. And so during that period of time, while council was considering this process, there were, there was a consultant that was retained to help manage the project. There were meetings with approximately 12 stakeholder groups. There were numerous meetings of the city's Planning and Economic Development Committee, and all of those had public comment periods. There was a city council work session that was devoted to the project. There were regular updates to city council as the process proceeded, all of those with public comment periods. There was a dedicated website on the project that the city maintained. There was a public meeting that was conducted at the U.S. Cellular Center on the project. A market overview was conducted and developed by the consultant that led to the development of suggested market-appropriate uses of the site, and there were multiple appraisals that were done to reconfirm fair market value over time on the piece of property. Ultimately, McKibben Hotel Group, as part of the development agreement they signed, agreed that they would not proceed with the development of the site. Last month, the city's Planning and Economic Development Committee reviewed the disposition processes that are available under North Carolina statutes. After reviewing the disposition processes, discussing city council goals and priorities and the current economic climate, the PED Committee recommended moving forward with an economic development sale of the property through an RFQ/RFP process. I'm sure there is a lot of discussion and questions that council will have, and a number of city staff are here, are here tonight to serve as resources and answer questions as council undertakes this discussion. And so we'll be happy to participate and answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone on council have any questions about the, of Sam, before we move forward?
I have a question, and I'm not sure who's best to answer it.
Okay.
As you're aware, as all of you in the room and on council are aware, there's been some movement in interest in the community in possibly developing that site as a park instead of, for redevelopment as a commercial structure. Studies have shown that park parcels in cities raise the value, the valuation of adjacent residences within, within a couple of blocks of them by eight to 20%. And I wonder if there's been any evaluation done, if that kind of increase in valuation of all the condos on Haywood Street, Battery Park, in the Grove Arcade, and so on, if those residential properties went up by, say, 10% in valuation, if the retail values went up in valuation due to a park being there, how does that compare with the possible tax revenue? Say we had an indigo there generating $300,000, it would be $150,000 for the city per year. Has there been a comparison of the potential for the improvement in valuation of adjacent properties, is what my question is?
I think the answer is no, there has not been a comparison. And it's a little challenging at the moment, as council is, you know, considering what uses to do. But on the previous process, there was not a consideration of that. I will say, in general, that there was a review of the city pieces of public property that were available as park space in the area of the project before. And I don't have that with me, but there was a fairly significant amount of, within a 20-minute walk. And I'm sure we can provide that information, again, to City Council. I'd have to find it, and I think maybe Blake Esselstyn and our planning department put that information together. But no, I don't believe there is a comparison of the comparable tax value for something like the indigo versus, you know, increased residential values, and I think that's your question.
Sam, if we were to, go ahead, sorry about my, if we were to go ahead with the RFQ/RFP process, can you just talk a little bit about how the development of that process would work? The development of the request?
I can.
May I have a related question, because I think it's close to that? There's also been talk about whether we need more hotels downtown, and were we to limit it to non-hotel-related proposals? Would that be too limiting, from your perspective?
Sure. I think I would answer that probably, you know, with, with part of the description of what the process would be, and ultimately would be a council policy, you know, discussion. But once the decision is made by council, you know, to move forward, if, in fact, you do decide to go forward with an RFQ/RFP process, there would be a number of steps that we would follow. And I think the staff's insight would be to follow the process that we undertook before, in a similar vein at least, because I think it was successful. I think that the challenge that we had with it wasn't the process, but was the, the change in the economy. But we would look to perhaps utilize some project management assistance, but we would undertake a series of stakeholder meetings, again, to, you know, to, to look at, from a community standpoint, the input from different folks who are involved in the area. I think we would also look to perhaps have the market overview updated. In, in the PED discussion, I think there was a little bit of a question about the market overview, and one of the things that it did, it looked at a number of different areas, everything from residential, commercial, office, hospitality uses, and what of those kinds of things, based on the existing market at the time, might be appropriate uses, not limiting, but what might be appropriate uses for the site. Candidly, you know, as that market overview ended, the economy became pretty stagnant, and not a whole lot has changed. As an example, I think one of the recommendations was the market could absorb, for the type of upscale hotel that might be in appropriate use, 150 rooms a year. At this point, there are certainly more hotel rooms that are on the, the planning board, but up to this date, almost eight years later, there have been only 300 that have been actually constructed. So based on that study, there is still, you know, a lot of rooms for absorption. But we would, I think, look to update that and determine what kind of appropriate market uses are in the community right now. We would also look to update the appraisal. One of the things that we would do would be to develop a request for qualifications. And I think there's been some discussion about why we would have a two-step process, a request for qualifications, and then perhaps a request for proposals. And the reasons for that really are many, but you can, you can kind of synthesize them down to two main areas. One, we want to make sure that whoever undertakes a project of this nature has the qualifications, has the experience, has the financial capabilities to take a, a project in a dense urban setting like this, surrounded by important structures, and complete it and, and do it successfully. We also want to not have folks undertake the expense of a fairly significant and expensive process to develop a proposal if, in fact, they don't have the qualifications to do that. So our goal is to also limit the, the financial risk that folks take and make sure that we get qualified folks before we then ask them to spend a fairly significant amount of money on a detailed proposal. So that would be the reason for doing a two-step qualification of prequalification and then inviting folks to do specific proposals. We would, I am sure, want to involve groups like the city's Downtown Commission, who has discussed this matter. I think, you know, they would be appropriate in some of the stakeholder meetings and a public information session. We would, I'm sure, have a, a committee that would be involved in reviewing the statements of qualification and looking at the criteria that would be used to prequalify folks. I think that would be another, certainly appropriate, use for folks on the, the city's Downtown Commission. So that's kind of the, in a nutshell, the process that we would undertake. And Councilman Pelley, to answer your question, I, I think from a staff perspective, we would suggest that the, the update to the market assessment would determine, you know, whether additional hospitality projects might or might not make sense on that site.
Sam, will that market assessment include the hotels in the pipeline?
It would.
Okay, any other questions?
I've got a couple more questions.
Yep.
This was a question, I don't know if you saw, I emailed something to Gary earlier, around kind of what measures are available for us to use as we look at this. And seeing, you know, hundreds of hotel rooms about to come online, several downtown, and with my recent kind of 24/7 focus on affordable housing policy, I'm really acutely aware that with that many low-wage workers working downtown, I don't know where these, where they're going to find a place to live. And we're adding, we're, those hotels will, will add hundreds of these low-wage jobs. And so as we're looking at how best to use this property, it's something I want us to keep in mind. I know that we can take a look at average wage. I don't know that average wage is always the best measure. So I'd probably want to, to know a little bit more about that. So just as this process goes forward, just understand that that's something I'm really going to be interested in.
Yes, sir.
No other questions?
I have a motion.
Okay.
I have a motion, and I'd like to offer a couple of comments after I provide the motion. And the motion I'll provide will be to move to the RFQ/RFP process as staff has suggested, but that the council become a little more clear about expectations that we would have. And this is to help would-be partners, development partners, understand a little more about the specifics of what the city leadership is interested in. First of all, the staff recommendation does include that the development must support the goals of the downtown master plan. My motion reinforces that. the goals of the downtown master plan, my motion reinforces that, that the project would be, preferably be developed for expanding the tax base, that this be a taxable property after it is developed, that the street level of the project incorporate uses that add to vibrancy and public activity on the streets. That's one of the great things about our downtown, so we would prefer that. That the, that the development move forward in the near term, and that we avoid partnering with a developer that would acquire the property with a view that they may develop it multiple years down the road, that the development would enhance the use of the U.S. Cellular Center, that it would complement that property that is critical to downtown, that the, that the development would protect and respect, protect the Basilica across the street, and respect the architecture of the Basilica, and that the development would favor the creation along with the development of a plaza, a public, publicly accessible plaza, and that in order to achieve the plaza, that a public-private partnership be pursued to make that economically feasible. These are, that is my motion to include those elements, set those expectations and hopes, they're not absolute requirements, they're preferences, that I think that developers need to hear so that they will understand a little bit better about what it would take to be successful in winning the project. And this is constrained under the economic, the statutes of North Carolina, and must yield economic development outcomes that are prescribed in the statutes. And so, I want to make sure that we employ these preferences to the extent they're allowable under the law. We, a couple of things, one thing I'd like to speak to, that Councilman Bothwell suggested that the park be actively considered and compared, and I would just like to point out, I've, as many of the people in the public know, I've thought long and hard and studied on this project quite a bit, and I've looked at it from the standpoint of state-of-the-art approaches to downtown renewal and development. And there's a, an area of study known as new urbanism, it's, it's a part of smart growth, and it is, it is how many thoughtful people look to successfully see downtowns redeveloped. Parks, a city without parks is a less appealing city, but it doesn't also follow that the more parks you have, the more appealing the city is going to be, and the more valuable the surrounding property is. In fact, there are studies that show that parks are located, that happen to be located on, away from the centers and on the outer edges of downtown, often create less vibrant, quieter, more dead zones. And I think if we look at Aston Park, which is off the corner of part of our downtown, we don't really see that Aston Park has stimulated redevelopment in its neighborhood. So, I think there are, there may be studies that, that relate to surrounding property values around parks, there, I think there are also studies likely out there that show that increased vibrancy through engaging types of development, that this could be perhaps with a plaza that connects up the U.S. Cellular Center and Basilica can also greatly stimulate nearby property values. In fact, if you look at the location of this site relative to some other surface parking lots, you know, many people I've heard from in the community feel like that redevelopment will occur, is more likely to occur on the surrounding surface parking lots with a, with a, an engaging, active project like this as opposed to a park. So, I just, I wanted to make sure that Councilman Bothwell and others understand that there are different, different views of the park idea. I clearly favor the kind of development that I've made the motion for, so I've made that motion, Mayor, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment.
Second?
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I won't argue the case at any length, but I'm not real clear why the haste at this time, since property values are just now going up as development's picking up. I do hope that any consideration of RFP/RFQ, RFQ/RFP approach turns out better than it did last time when we only had one bidder, and we awarded it to McKibben, who then sat on it. So, I agree with you about the getting it done in a timely way. I think your inclusion, Vice Mayor, of the idea of some kind of a plaza that's a public space is a good one, because I, I know the Civic Center hosts lots of graduations each year, and it seems to me like having a place across the street where people could take pictures of the happy graduates and all would be a bonus to a lot of people in the city. And I know that in some cities where there's a park space adjacent to their venues, their entertainment venues, big-name bands will go out and do a brief live show for everybody before they go in and do their big paid show. We do have the Basilica, which is world-class architecture, I mean, it's known worldwide, people come here to see it. We have the Grove Arcade, that's another piece of world-class architecture, and the more we can see those buildings and step back from them and look at them, it offers more appreciation to a lot of people. Honestly, I would love to see this put before the people. We decided that the water question was a good one to do a referendum, because of course we knew the people of the city would vote with us. On this, a referendum, I think we'd go for the park, based on polling that I've done in the past, and the polls have proved to be pretty accurate. So, I don't know why we wouldn't put it on the October, on the November ballot and let the people, the city voters, decide what they want to do with arguably the most valuable remaining vacant space in the city. Thank you.
I just want to ask a process question. If we adopt the resolution that Vice Mayor Hunt said, how does that interact with the citizens' input to, it was my understanding that the citizens were going to help us come up with an RFP/RFQ, so if, if we put all these constraints down?
I think what, I think what, if I understand what, what the motion was, it's selecting a process that we're going to use an RFQ/RFP process rather than an auction, just put it on the auction block.
Right.
So, we're choosing that path, and, and I think we're having our own public hearing in terms of our input, but that there will also be this opportunity for public input before the final wording is drafted for the RFQ. Would we want to look at the final wording here, or would we, after the public process is complete, or consider it at PED, or?
Again, drawing on past experience, I'm sorry, Mr. Councilwoman Davis. Drawing on past experience, we did bring the request for qualifications back to council before it was issued. I mean, we would not, you could certainly delegate that to the city manager, and so again, there's a little bit of a council discussion on that, but the previous process came back to council before it was issued.
Okay, so the, the resolution is just going to say, we're going to do an RFP/RFQ, and it's not going to have all the conditions that Vice Mayor Hunt?
No, we're, I think we're only committing to one, one process versus another.
I think the Vice Mayor did include in his wording that those were areas that we would, we would try to achieve, but didn't lock us into that. And I also would like to add that we got a, an email that went to council from Chair of Downtown Commission, Hazard, and we have Commissioner Hesch in the room this evening. The Downtown Commission was very specific that they wanted to be involved in the process, and their, their enabling ordinance gives them that right, so it's a great opportunity to have their input on what we do with this RFQ or RF, RFQ/RFP process.
Do you, do we want, do we want, if the motion passes, if we, do we want the RFQ to go back to PED and then to the full council, or just back to the full council? Any preference? Here?
Gary, do you have a view of that?
Yeah, may as well.
Okay, all right. Now, we're going to, unless anyone else has any more questions? All right, if there's anyone wishing to make public comment on the motion, yes, please, come forward, state your name, you have three minutes.
I'm an Asheville resident, right born here.
If you could just state your name for the record.
Henry M. Harris. Our family held that property since it was dug off of Battery Park Hill up till early My father struggled with the property a great part of his life. He always said, "Well, the Basilica of St. Lawrence had to be looked at." Of course, yes, there was an architectural consideration on the Basilica, it's, the dome, I read a little bit about that. Well, of course, my father was no expert on that, neither him. Yes, it is quite valuable, the Basilica, to the historic part of the city. We were not Catholic then, maybe way back we were, but my feeling as a third generation on this was, yeah, there should be some kind of park there, but it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be exclusive. The city has an interest there of the, of the Civic Center. I worked with Grace Press a little bit on that property, but, and, and the time I was supposed to know something about it, we got a graffiti, graffiti input, well, I didn't even know the laws on that. That's where I wound out, I guess. But, yes, it is a valuable public space up there, it's valuable to all of us. That's my feelings.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the motion? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Rebecca Heck, I'm on the Downtown Commission. I also own two businesses downtown. Today, I'm before you as someone who's very passionate about downtown and who loves downtown very much. I would ask that you just pause and have a broader conversation about this property. It's a key piece of property, it's publicly owned. We have an opportunity here to not just lay back and say, "Developers, come, do what you will with us." I don't think that a hotel is the highest use of this property. I understand, you know, the desire for a park, and I think that would be great, I think a plaza would be great, I understand the city's need to have this on their, on their tax books. Since we don't get any hotel tax, I don't think that a hotel's a good idea here. We've had two new hotels built downtown since this proposal was originally put in place. We have five new hotels proposed. They are only going to bring low-paying wages. This money, this property was bought with Parking Enterprise money, which technically means it should be returned. I was told that the original idea was to have workforce housing, but that was not the best use. I agree with this property, that maybe workforce housing could be located somewhere else. My question would be, have you decided where to place workforce property instead? Once you get the money from the sale of this property, where is that workforce housing going to be? Have you changed your priorities, or will the money go back into the Parking Enterprise Fund? Obviously, the Basilica's a gem in downtown, and in our state, it needs to be protected. We have our cultural arts and event venue right across the street. We need to think about the traffic flow in that area. With the original proposal, there was no consideration made to how the streets worked, pedestrians interacted with that intersection. It is messed up when you try to go over there and there's graduations happening, or a big concert, people are trying to cross the street, there aren't proper crosswalks. These are all things that need to be taken into consideration in this plan. And again, I just ask that you please don't put a hotel there. I'd like to look it back at my notes. So, does anybody have an answer about the, about the workforce housing, and what the original plan was, and the Parking Enterprise Fund money, and all those details that I could just know for myself?
Sure. Go ahead.
Rebecca, when we, we initially started talking about city-owned properties, Councilman Newman at the time brought up that it would be a great idea to look at the properties of city-owned and try to maximize the value of what we had, and that's how we ended up with the consultants' work on, on city-owned lands. And part of the direction at that time was to find those lands that best suited themselves for workforce housing and other high strategic goals of council. And we did recognize, especially with the public-private partnership with the Aloft Hotel, Mr. McKibben, with private, or public properties investment, that there would be a workforce housing dedicated, area dedicated back of the Aloft. We also recognized that the, the area, the, near the tennis courts, our, our park maintenance facility would make a great area for workforce housing. So, those things have been identified. Councilman Smith and myself have both said that we would like to see revenues generated from, a portion of revenues generated go toward that workforce housing. That's just two members of council, but I suspect that there are others here that see the opportunity for us to do some things along those lines. So, it has been given consideration, and will, as I think, as we continue to see what the highest and best use of these city-owned properties are around, but this one clearly is one of the most, one of the, as you've clearly stated, it's, it's one of the most valuable properties, and Mr. Harris as well, that we should be deriving maximum benefit from it. So, hopefully, that's, that's a stab at it, I'm not sure that really cues it down, but I think that's where we were.
I'd like to see that priority continued and make sure that, that either the money goes into workforce housing or back into the Parking Enterprise Fund as it should. And I just encourage the smart growth of, you know, not hotels where people only spending a couple of nights, that if we're going to do smart growth and smart development, it's about a dense urban core with residences, affordable housing, and I think we have plenty of hotels coming down the line right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the motion? There, and then there.
Good evening, City Council, Timothy Sadler. And I've got to say that I'm personally concerned at this point that the property will end up becoming a hotel, and that'll be a total debacle, you know, as far as the public is concerned. I would also like to encourage a clause to see that it not be another in the pipeline of hotels that we have coming. And I would personally like to see something family-oriented. I know it's been pointed out that we don't have, you know, a great place for kids to be in the city, it's come up a couple of times, and anyway, I think it would be really neat if there was, you know, some sort of museum or kind of fun space for, for the entire family there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Hi, my name's Jonathan Wayne Scott. Congratulations on everybody who got inaugurated. There are a couple of prominent locations in Asheville right now that are sort of in flux. One is obviously the property that we're talking about here on Haywood Street, and there's also Pack Place. As we're considering what the best civic use is for this property, I would like you to perhaps consider the notion of replacing the $2 million cash investment into the Asheville Art Museum and donating this property instead. What that would do is separate leases as everybody's What that would do is separate leases, as everybody's interested in doing with the Asheville Art Museum, at Pack Place. This allows the Asheville Art Museum to stand and grow on its own. Of course, a museum would give us the opportunity to create a cultural and architectural gem in this location. It complements the civic center quite well, complements the Basilica well. And then, from Pack Place, with the removal of the art museum, that allows the Colbert Museum to continue to grow and prosper there. We could perhaps have a reincarnation of the Health Center, and this would also give enough space for technology and sciences location within Pack Place. So, seeing these two problems not separately, they might be able to solve one another, and I just thought I would throw that out there. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the motion? All right, seeing none, I will close the public comment. We have a motion and a second. Are there any further questions before we vote? Comments? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We will move on to the next item under New Business. A, a resolution adopting revisions to the traffic calming policy and adoption of an action plan for the current fiscal year's regular capital improvement plan for traffic calming projects. Ken Putnam is here to speak to us about this.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. The purpose of this staff report is for you to consider a resolution revising the traffic calming policy and then instructing staff to move forward with the action plan to spend this year's monies for traffic calming devices. As you know, it's been several years since traffic calming has been funded, and as a result, we've grown quite a backlog list. And that list is something that staff is very interested in trying to go through and meet the needs there, if they're still there, because some of the projects have been on the list so long that the interest may have died, but we're going through a process to determine that. One of the first steps we did, we went through the entire list that we had and put it in priority order based on a criteria that is in the existing traffic calming policy, and some of the projects that were there did weed themselves out. For example, roads that didn't carry enough traffic volumes per day to be on the list, as one example. We now, we still have a list, though, that has roughly 12 miles of roads that need to be considered. Obviously, as we go through, as we get to each individual road, we'll have to meet again with the neighbors, we'll have to meet with internal departments to make sure there's no major red flags that would keep us from moving forward and that. But what we want to concentrate on initially will be the first five that are on the list, but primarily the first two, which happens to be Bear Creek Road and Riverview Drive, they fell out, one and two. What's nice about these two roads is Bear Creek Road is a shorter section of road, and so we'll be dealing with fewer property owners, and Riverview Drive is a longer piece of road, and we'll be dealing with a lot more neighbor input. But it'll give us a chance, as we go through this process with them, to really tweak the recommendations that we're bringing forward to you tonight, so that we can get on a faster turnaround for the future projects and going into the second, the third, and the fourth year. So, just to highlight the revisions that we're asking you to consider, the first one would be that as far as the devices go that we want to use, we want to limit them to just speed humps and/or speed cushions. We don't want to get into the idea of median islands, curb extensions, the more expensive items. We're trying to make the best use of the money that you've given to us so that we can take care of the backlog list, we want to concentrate on these less expensive items. We want to, for these projects, or for the future projects, because even though we have a backlog list, we continue to get new requests for new projects. So, we want to eliminate the 40% petition for all the new projects. Not, that doesn't have anything to do with what the projects that are on the list. We also want to allow partial private funding for future projects. Right now, it can either be all publicly funded or all privately funded, so we want to give the opportunity for some folks to pay partial payments in. We still want to stick with the idea that traffic calming devices cannot be installed on any street where the fire department's standard of coverage would be below 90%. And that's on the map that you've seen before that Chief Burnett has shared, that's the yellow and the red areas instead of the green. And then, we would like you to consider allowing us to use 3% of the annual monies for future projects to begin a structured awareness campaign that would substitute for the 40% petition, to try to involve the neighbors in trying to do something proactively for a period of six months that would demonstrate whether or not they had success or not before we move forward with the next step. The action plan, then, is to, how are we gonna take care of the monies that we have earmarked for this year, which is $100,000? Assuming we get approval of this tonight, then in April will be a busy month for us. We will, first off, have the internal department meetings to make sure the roads that we've chosen can still move forward. We would define those petition areas, we would prepare the maps, and we would prepare the petition forms themselves. Then we would meet with those neighborhood groups so that they could fully understand what's expected of them for the 60% petition, the one that says, "Yes, we all agree that we want you to move forward in the construction phase." And then, the construction phase, we would earmark for May and June, and our goal is to at least get the projects obligated for construction before fiscal year-end, but more than likely, most of them will be built in the summer months. And then after this year, we'll try and be able to get everything within the same year. We have to bear in mind that once the neighborhood has turned loose to gather the 60% petition, we really can't move forward until we get that threshold. And some neighborhoods may take a longer period of time to do it, especially if they've got more properties to have to go after. Then the third thing that we're asking you to consider tonight is whether or not we should lower that 60% petition threshold to one that would be 50% plus one. And we've done some research on past policies and the best information that we can find, first of all, we all know that this whole subject can be controversial. We don't necessarily always have 100% people for it. And so, if we're, so, most cities, most communities set the thresholds fairly high so that when you do go to the construction phase, you're at least getting a strong consensus of the affected property owners. Because, again, we're not asking the folks to weigh in that just simply drive on the road, but we're asking the petition to be signed by those people that have property on the road. So, we've kind of got a limited thing. And just for your information, I went back, and when the policy was adopted in 2000, the threshold at that point in time was recommended to be 70%, but council approved it at 60%. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I move to approve the resolution revising the traffic calming policy and instructing staff to move forward with the action plan they have proposed.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Anyone wishing to speak on the motion?
Council members, Madam Mayor, my name is Rich Lee, and I live in, I'm gonna call it central east-west Asheville, if we can add another cardinal directive. As many of you know, in early January, a car speeding on Riverview Drive crossed the center line and struck a construction dumpster that was sitting there, knocking it into the homeowner on the other side and shattering both of his legs. He had to be airlifted to Mission Hospital. This traffic calming is, as you guys all know, long overdue on this side of town. I'm so thrilled to see it happening. The accident in January was destined to happen. We did a traffic study out there last year, and they recorded a top speed on the hill coming up from French Broad River Park of 70 miles an hour every day that they had the tubes out there. I just, um, just please make the process quick and easy for us. We have people that are ready to go out there tomorrow and do petitions, and make it sustainable in future budgets. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, I understood, though, if we revise the policy per the motion, for future projects, a petition won't be required, if that's what I understood you to say.
That was the 40% petition. That was the petition that kind of gets us started in the whole process of design and project. But if we go to these devices where we're just saying it's speed humps or speed cushions, we really don't need to do that process.
You don't need a petition.
But at the same time, we would work with those neighbors in trying to say, for example, we'd go out and establish what that 85th percentile speed is today. We would work with them so that they could work among themselves to try to be proactive in controlling the speeds over a period of six months. At that time, we'd go back and duplicate the study. If we see a difference, great, if we don't, then we proceed with the normal process. The 60% petition or whatnot is still required to make sure that everybody's on board for us to do the actual construction.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. All right, anyone else wishing to comment on the motion?
Ken, I want to say thank you for working us through the staff process and getting us to the place we are today. I know it's been a long policy, a long effort to revise this, to the policy here. And I also want to say thank you to my fellow council members for funding traffic calming for the first time in eight years. If, as we go out to community meetings, it's oftentimes the top of the list or near the top of the list of concerns that we hear from residents about speeding, about other traffic-related issues in neighborhoods here. And so, you know, what I like about the revisions here is that we are taking a more limited approach. We're not doing the islands, as you say, we're not doing the bulbouts, we're just doing the speed humps and the speed cushions here. And I'm also pleased that we are gonna integrate a neighborhood awareness campaign into this as well, too, to get the community buy-in, and, you know, also that we're allowing partial funding from neighborhood, from neighborhoods to help them get bumped up the list if they choose to go that way. So, I appreciate the work here, and I appreciate that we're gonna finally be addressing the backlog here, and thank you.
Anybody else? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, thanks, Ken. The last item on our agenda tonight is a resolution adopting a policy for naming city of Asheville structures, and Chief Burnett is with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. The Fire Department has drafted a policy for consideration for naming of city of Asheville structures. The background on this, we had a request from a family of a city of Asheville employee who was killed in the line of duty, and since that time, we've had another request from a family to name a fire station and a police station after those city employees who were killed in line of duty. What we found was that we did not have a current policy related to naming of city of Asheville structures. We do have a policy for naming our parks and our greenways, but we did not have a policy for naming fire stations and police stations. And so, the Fire Department, in coordination with several other departments, did some research on other communities and how other communities look at naming fire stations, police stations, city structures after those in the community, after city employees. In looking at what other communities do for naming of city facilities, we found a middle of the road of the different policies that we looked at from across the country and across the region, and included in this draft policy were a blend, a middle of the road for these different policies. Included in most of these policies were a mechanism for suggestions to come to council. And that could come through the city manager's office, through staff, and then also a mechanism to come from the public to council. They included a public input process, and then also, the majority of these policies that we located were a council decision on each property. The draft policy that you have in front of you incorporates these items. Specifically, the policy for consideration allows council to blend the parks naming policy with the building naming policy and just have a public property naming policy. And that way, if someone from the public, or a group of people from the public, comes to city manager's office, comes to council members and wants to have our community consider naming a public property in the city of Asheville, it could be delegated to the appropriate committee. If it's a greenway that wants to be named in line with our existing parks policy, it could be reviewed first by the Greenway Commission, as an example. If it was a fire station that was requested to be named, it could be reviewed by the Public Safety Committee, whatever committee council felt needed that first initial review, but then ultimately, in every case, it was council's decision. And so, with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions? Or a motion?
Mayor, a comment or two. Public Safety, of course, has looked at this actually on two occasions, and we felt like it should come forward because, for one thing, we are getting requests for naming, but there were some concerns, frankly, that one request leads to another. And I think that it was pretty clear, or I felt like it was, in the Public Safety Committee, that this was not in any way of saying that we're just going to start naming stuff. This is reserved, this does not, it's a may rather than shall in here, that this is a guideline, that it's, we're not all of a sudden just throwing open to naming every property that we have. It should be reserved for a very special occasion, like loss of life on duty, those are huge, and we certainly, I for one, when, and said that in Public Safety, I think, that when it originally came up, the name of the Jeff Bourne Bridge, to me, it felt maybe more appropriate to name Captain Bourne Station. But, as it turned out, the Commissioner of Insurance kind of beat us to the punch, and it's taken on far better recognition than I ever suspected would. In fact, tonight, we referred to the Jeff Bourne Bridges two or three times in public comments. So, you know, who knows what's significant, but I think that we should recognize that this is not here to hamstring council, it's here to use as a guideline when those occasions arise. And Vice Mayor Hunt brought some concerns this afternoon that I felt were very legitimate, and he would like to talk about those right now.
Sure. And I would move adopting the policy with a couple of changes, and I think it's in line, Chief Burnett, with your suggestion that it follow, you know, a routine course through decision-making process of council. And so, specifically, we've, the agenda includes a specific policy, the resolution that refers to the specific policy guideline, and I would offer, there's a, the seventh to the last paragraph, the one that starts with suggestions for the naming, I would strike the sentence that says, "The suggestion shall be in writing, and if the suggestion is from a member of the public, it must be supported by 30 or more registered voters of the city, as evidenced by their signatures on the request." I would continue to strike the following words, "Upon receipt of a naming request or upon a consensus of the council, to name a particularly, particular property or portion thereof, the council shall make an announcement at a scheduled public meeting so as to provide for an opportunity to receive input from appropriate sources. The council will delay in making a decision until the next regularly scheduled meeting at the earliest." And the reason that I think that particular language that I just read out should go, should be removed, is that it actually says that if any 30 people get together and want to name public property after anyone, that they can bring that forward, and the council must consider that, put it on the agenda, and vote on it. I think what we're better off doing is deleting that language and simply saying that any proposal from the public or otherwise, come to council and come onto committee and council's agendas through normal means, through normal policy.
Well, I don't think we need to, we wouldn't even need to add that language, because that's, we have a policy in place.
But, you know, if this policy is read by the public, you know, it- But, you know, if this policy is read by the public, you know, it just helps the public understand, okay, look at the council, and so people will know, the routine way, the policy way that items get on council agenda is either the mayor and the city manager agree to bring something onto the agenda, or any three members of council can bring an item on the agenda. And I agree with Jan that namings should be infrequent and in special circumstances only, and if there is an interest by the public, then they bring it forward, and either the mayor and the manager get it flowing, or any three council members get it flowing. And I feel more comfortable that way instead of having things pushed onto our agenda through means that are not the routine. So I would make that motion, Jan, and you know, you guys have worked harder on this, and I apologize for.
Well, we really haven't worked that hard on it. Actually, Chief Nysley did most of the heavy lifting on this and did a great job, but that is something that did cause me concern because I feel like the public may feel that, you know, if you get 30 people, you can get something named. And I don't want that misperception out there.
All right, I appreciate that. So there was a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions from council? All right. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right.
Chief Burnett, thanks to you and others on the staff. This has been an important thing for you guys, and I really appreciate that, and I'm glad we're getting it done here.
I have one person who has signed up to speak, and before we do that, what I would just like to note for members of the public, the council held a work session last week, which was not televised because we held it in our first-floor meeting room. But at that work session, we took the opportunity to recognize the passing of Senator Martin Nesbit and offer a resolution in his honor. His son was gracious enough to attend our meeting and receive the resolution. So I wanted to note that that occurred last week, and many of us were in attendance at the funeral service as well. And also, a great Ashvillian, Lori Masterton, passed away, as many of you know, and at that same meeting last week, the city council offered a resolution in her memory, and her two sisters were gracious enough to come to that meeting and accept the resolution in her honor. So I just wanted to mention those two items. We, I've got Timothy Sadler signed up to speak.
Good evening, once again, City Council, Madam Mayor. I'm Timothy Sadler, and really have some positive feedback, more than anything, here tonight. You know, attended the retreat, the council retreat, and thought it was fantastic. But the conversation that really kind of hit home for me was with Karen Cragnolan, who apparently has attended 26 council retreats.
She's a record holder.
And her feedback was that that was the best retreat that she's been a part of. So wanted to share that. Also, wanted to commend Councilman Smith for his comments around the I-26 connector. It was really touching, and just thank you for being such a good voice on that issue. Okay, so pleasantries, oh, one more. I just wanted to compliment Mayor Manheimer for an amazing job so far. I think you're off to an amazing start, really, and so I appreciate that. Lastly, I wanted to kind of touch on something that Lee Fisher had offered at the Creative Sector Summit, you know, and was an observation that our development services are really lagging, you know, behind other cities. And, you know, it's something that I hear about more and more, and also, being a part of development myself, you know, I kind of know this firsthand, you know, how difficult it is to deal with the development office. And, you know, I think we have a great opportunity to kind of turn logic on its head and really be a leader in customer service through development office. You know, so I'd like to encourage, you know, a kind of a good look at what incentives, you know, the development service office could let folks know about that are out there. For instance, Jason Walls with Duke had a whole list that he presented at the Downtown Commission, and it was just struck me as an opportunity that, you know, our development services could be letting developers know, you know, what incentives are that are out there. So wanted to encourage a customer service training where the office would kind of become aware of what incentives they could be sharing with people that come through, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak tonight? No? Okay, we have a closed session, and you're ready with the motion? Froggy?
Nice.
I'd be happy to read.
Just wave this. That happens to you. I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons. One, to prevent disclosure of information that's privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the general statute. The law that makes the information privileged and confidential is NCGS 143-318.103. The statutory authorization is contained in NGC, NCGS 143-318.11A1 and 2, to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved. The statutory authorization is NCGS 143-1, excuse me, 143-318.11A3.
Second. All right, and we'll adjourn from the closed session. All those in favor, please.